...in Plain Township, Rhode East, for Tuesday, June 24, 2014. I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members and department heads, we have, of course, our agenda is presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads?
Mr. Haas, I would like to remove zoning 2A from the agenda, please.
Then, I'm going to add, under Communications, number 1, Fred Clevinger, 7237 Saratoga Hills. Do we have any other additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads? Okay, the agenda will stand as amended. Let's see, Sheriff's Report, we don't have anything. Is there anybody in the crowd that has anything specific for the Sheriff's Office that needs to be addressed? Please state your name and address for the fiscal officer for the record.
My name's Robert Brenneman, 4133 Plain Center, Northeast Canton, Ohio, 44714. Yeah, concerning EB's Party Center over on 39th Street, the Metal Lake Golf Course, police rep my home 3rd time this year, Sunday on June 15th. There could have been many more times that I could have called the police, but I'm sort of hesitant because of the recording that I received from the proprietor, the guy who's running it now. The deputy heard it, Givasis heard the recordings. Now, they say they're, you know, going to be a benefit to the community in regards, you know, make sure there's not going to be any problems with the neighbors. Well, it's, nothing's changed there, nothing's changed. Saturday night, I had the windows open, I had to close them because I didn't want to have rock music coming in the house. It'd be nice to go outside, but I don't think that's right that I have to close my windows because of rock music. My wife asked me Sunday, she said, "Do you want to have a cookout?" And I said, "No, I don't want to have a cookout." Fear of having to listen to rock music, I'm out there cooking burgers on the grill. You know, this has been going on for, Raptors was there, I thought that, this is like 7 years now this has been going on. And it's just, as the ordinance says, you know, it's, I'm 500 feet away and it's annoying. It's not something I'm doing here out of a whim, this has been going on for years. I'm just, I've been forced now to call the police just more and more, I just don't know what else to do. You know, it's very discouraging to come home, you want to have an outside, nice outside dinner or something, and instead you're calling the police and writing up things in your book. It's just not right. I don't know.
I did talk to Detective Hostel, and he said, yeah, when he got there, the door was open.
Well, it's just, it's just not one of the doors open. It was just as loud Saturday night when you were out there a few years ago and took a recording on your phone. It was just as bad. This is as bad. You get the rock bands in there, and I don't care what the guy said, they're going to tell the bands to tone it down. They don't tone it down. You get people out there at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night outside yelling and talking, you know, it's...
Maybe we can do is get a report from the Sheriff's Office, listing out the number of complaints that we've gotten, including Mr. Brenneman's, and see how many other people...
Yeah, unfortunately Detective Koenig had to leave due to a Sheriff's Department emergency. I'll touch base with him tomorrow. Oh, hi. If you could, for us, get a listing of all those reports and who else's complaints, and compile that for us to take a look at and review, and I could bring it back to the board, that would be great.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Just one other thing I'd add on that point there is that, you know, I'm the closest one out there. Many of you have been at my home, you know, because of this, and I'm the closest one, and I'm the one that's being affected. And irregardless if it's 1 person be affected or 10, the law, the ordinance, the law is the law. It should help me just the same as it would help 10 people if they're complaining. There should be no lesser regard for my concerns, even if it's just myself.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Brenneman, for all that. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Sheriff's Office with any immediate matters? That closes out the Sheriff's Report, then Detective's Report, it's going to move to new business, and then turn that over to our Administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, item number 1 of the false alarms.
Also move on to business number 1, second discussion, roll call. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
And that's the end of new business?
Thank you, that will take us to the fiscal officer's report, I'll turn that over to Mr. Flax.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer #1 is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in the amount of $223,228.12.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer #2 is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of regular payroll in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer #3 is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment for the following medical claims provided by healthcare.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer #4 is the investment report. Fiscal Officer #5 is a request for a resolution to enter into a contract with Frank Gates Service Company.
Also move, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer #6 is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfer.
So move on, Fiscal Officer #6, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer #7 is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment to the members of the Plain Township Boards in zoning appeals and zoning commissions for the period of January 1 through June 30 of 2014.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Finally, Fiscal Officer #8 is a request for a resolution to set a hearing for the lighting district. This is the current lighting district, this is just to add 1 light that sits just outside the district.
Also move, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that concludes the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Flax. It's going to take us to our Administrator's Report, Ms. Campbell.
Yes, this evening I just wanted to give some heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Iacino, Mr. Schadlberger, Chief Snyder, Mr. Falk, Mr. Steinberg, for all of their work, teamwork, late hours, late nights, working for this past, going on a week and a half now, with the flooding that's taken place in Plain Township. It's been heartbreaking with some of the homes that have been a total loss. It's been tough, and the hardest part is not being able to just fix it. Joe, tomorrow is meeting with our engineer, Rob Graham. They're driving through many of the areas to see what, if anything, that we can do in-house or start our own list aside from what the county commissioners have. Then we're all sitting down to see, to think outside of the box, to see if there are any grants available, even through the EPA, if any of these are water quality grants, to come up with some fixes in areas that are typically hit, and we're familiar with those areas, the whole Montsaw Way, the houses on Chatsworth. Denny has been great with his knowledge on water, on flooding, and his expertise has been great through his time also. There is one grant that is available right now to any homeowners who have experienced losses by the severe weather. And this is the Renew Ohio and Rebuild Ohio through Josh Mandal, the State Treasurer of Ohio. The information is on our website, you can actually download the instructions to apply. This is a program for Ohioans whose businesses or homes were damaged by the severe weather. It is a loan, so the money does have to be paid back, but it is something that's in place right now. And again, the information's available on our website. Joe, do you have anything to add at this time?
I've received, I mean, hundreds of phone calls, and myself and my staff have gone out to almost every one of them so far. We're still working on the list, and if there's something we can do in-house, we are taking care of it as we go. Our vac truck are checking all the pipes and checking all the catch paces, and 99% of them are plugged. It's just with so much water, so fast, 2 days in a row, the systems cannot handle it. All these systems were built in the 60s, there weren't all these homes, there weren't all these paved services, and the ground's just not sorted yet. So, if there's something that can be done by us, we will take care of it. We've dug several so far in the past week. Spot, I know you've got several emails from people, Lou, Al, everybody's got emails. But we are diligently spending all our time checking out all these 6 places.
Just for the point of clarity, I know I was speaking with a couple of our parts over in North Canton. I'm actually about, you know, we know there's been studies that have been done on what can be done to help remediate, fix some of the drainage and so forth, but, you know, is it time to see if a new study needs to be done on where these fixes are, and then can we use that current or potentially that new information and really force the hand possible with the Michigan Marinerate Conservancy District? Because they put on every one of us, property owners, on our tax bill a fee to which, you know, portion of that money should and could be redirected back into the political subdivisions. Because we always hear, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but when it comes to, you know, the words mean becoming action, it seems there may be a difference there, so...
Joe, I would, Joe, just a quick question, please, uh, what's her name from State Works?
Sarah Buehl, yes.
In regards to Solway. What she recommended that we do, because it seems that the majority of the focus has been along the portion of the summer ditch and areas in North Canton solely that Kirk Shering has been holding meetings, but we haven't been included as a subdivision in those discussions. And she recommended that we call Mr. Shering and say that we be notified about the future meetings and discussions so he can get involved, because part of the planning is taking place, Scott is going to be some of the remediation issues and describing all possibilities that might be able to be done to fix some of these issues. But, I mean, up to this point, she told me it's been pretty much focused inside the city of North Canton, and we haven't been included in those, so we should ask if we could...
Yes, and we did send her, Joe and I sent her a list of...
All those addresses.
Of those addresses to include, and she was going to put those on that list. And then, yes, we spoke to her also, and I know that you've already contacted Kirk Shering, as the other 2 board members would, and Joe and I will also. But we did give her those addresses and said, "Put those on the list." And then we said we would also like to sit down with her and talk about that.
Well, Kirk Shering has been more than, more than helpful with the issues going on inside the city. It's just that, because the focus has been solely inside that, like, you know, for one reason or another, we weren't included in those initial discussions. And she told us to make phone calls again to Kirk Shering and asked that we be notified in the meetings so we can have a place to pay for part of those discussions.
Didn't Sarah say in her email that that one property on Solway was already included on that list?
There's 2 of our properties that are on the list for future funding, but I think they somehow need to be fast-tracked, because I think our 2 properties are worse than any property in North Canton, honestly.
The one for sure is probably the worst out of all of them along that drainage line, so...
I was down there today looking, it's still wet. Kirk has gone down, but there's still a lot of it sitting in her yard. It's bad, that property is very...
That's the end of the Administrator's Report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Turn it over to Chief Snyder, prior department report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have what I had this evening, it's a change order for general contractor, ECMC, for a decrease in the contract sum of around $1,000, $1,010.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
That'll close out the prior department, it's going to take us to the road department. Mr. Iacino?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have number 1 as a list of the paving bids that ECMC opened this past week, or last week. As you can see, the bids were very close, each year we've got 3 bids. Prices have gone up once again for the pavement method that we chose this year. Like, you know, the list, those streets will be posted on our website for the residents to look at. We discussed in the past, Snyder Road is one of our main spaces to take care of this year, so... With all the schools and all the other traffic, it's an entire duty to take care of.
Joe?
Yes.
See the total volume here, total, approximately, this is when the pay rate lies?
Yeah, 8.04 miles.
7,000, 7,300.
Yes, and as you can see, there's 24 hours between the next bid and like, 20,000 between the 3rd bid, so they were... We estimated it, and it took that price.
Joe, in this particular case, where I know we're supposed to usually look at the lowest bidder, since these are very close, in the past, do any of these strike where they've done exceptionally better job than the other 2? Does one stand out?
No, we've had, we've had all 3 of these work here, pretty much the first and the third more than the middle one. But they're, they're good companies. We have a good rapport with those companies, our inspectors are on, they know what we expect. We always have a pre-con meeting before they do any work here. I feel very comfortable with the low bidder on this one.
I know from prevailing wage, I feel very comfortable with the low bidder. I've worked with them, and it's worked out very well.
Just need to move on to this one.
Yeah, the next one is, I want to add to the one. Item #2 is to award the 2014 Plain Township paving and road repair project to Central Ally. They are the most responsible for their following prices.
Also move on, road #2, second discussion.
Just for the record, so it's clear, this dollar amount is the same that we spent back in 2005. We've paved 6 miles in New York that were paved with the same amount.
And we fixed 5,000 through the curb gutter.
With the discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Item #3 is a resolution for the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the execution of the contract with Central Ally for the 2014 Plain Township paving and road repair project.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Close this out, the road department, it's going to take us to the zoning department, and then turn that over to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, gentlemen. Zoning #1 is a motion, a resolution to set a public hearing on July 8 at 6:15 for text amendments from zoning amendment #556 recently passed by our Township Zoning Commission.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, zoning #2, we have nuisance payments, we have 12 this evening. As we recall, we did remove 2A from the agenda tonight, is probably the 1st, we have to...
And then move on, zoning 2B through Antler. I'll second those. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Givasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Mr. Falk. It's going to take us to the parks department, and then turn that over to Mr. Snyder.
Gentlemen, a one update for you this evening. We have decided, as of Thursday, when the press releases went out and the postings went up, to postpone the farmer's market until further notice, given the state of emergency and some of the impact of it in and around the township and in the parks. We decided to step back, make sure cleanup's done right, make sure we do the event properly as well. So we'll get with you on more firm dates as things get back to normal.
Yeah, we got a little nervous as we were closing and shutting down parks, but just with the state that everything was, we might as well pull back, hold off, and then just take a breath.
That's all, gentlemen, thank you.
Nothing for the law director, let the record go, did the law director...
He's not a text, he should be here in about 5 minutes. I'm sure he's going the speed limit.
Under Communications, I had added Fred Clevinger of 7237 Saratoga Hills. And even though it reads Joe and Scott, this is directly to Joe, quite frankly. Mr. Clevinger had expressed a concern about some drainage over in Saratoga Hills and where it was washing out, a couple foot, you know, that it dug out right around the drain spot. He followed up with an email today going impressive, most impressive. The destruction was on Monday, June 16, and a week later, the repair is complete. I'm sure you guys get more than your fair share of folks complaining about one thing or another in your capacity. However, you will hear none from me, the only comment I can make is wow and thanks. So, again, nice work, Joe, by not only your team, but again, everybody for pulling together last week with the devastation, you know, so we could triage things and respond to residents in the most effective and efficient manner possible.
I agree, I want to thank everyone also, the Board of Trustees, we're all out there, Denny, Lisa, Rob, Donnie and his crews. It was amazing the way we all came together. Like Lisa said earlier, it's hard not to tell people we still can't help them, so we got to figure out...
I agree, nice job. There's nothing else in our communications, it's going to bring us to public speech. We've got a couple set items on the agenda here. First, we'd like, first one, we'd like to table until the law director gets here. I know some of you did earn attendance. We've got to have this console on, so what we're going to do is take number 2, which is Jennifer Davis, Big Dog Cross, or either of them in attendance here this evening.
Rob, did you give them the time to come this evening?
I told them we started at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
And that they were in the public speech portion.
Nobody here from Big Dog Cross? Should we, uh, make references with the boards?
I would just...
Can I let that go? We'll close that out. We will. Yeah, okay, that'll take us back to the first item.
2 minutes.
I prefer not to close out public speech and then jump into the public minutes. Is there anybody else in the crowd in attendance that wishes to address the Board of Trustees outside of what I believe most of you are here for that is in conjunction with Mr. John Jurgensen, Attorney at Law? If so, we just need to state your name and your address for the record. There is a 3-minute limit on public speech per individual.
He just flew into the cutting room.
Okay, well, Eric, perfect timing here. We'll ask Mr. Jurgensen then to go ahead and address the board. We're going to ask you to state your name in full along with your address for the record.
Yeah, my name is John Jurgensen, it's 2633 Diamond Street, Portus. Gentlemen, it's plain, how are you? First of all, I'd like to address the 3-minute rule. I'm going to ask for discretion, your party allows us to speak a little longer before you do this.
Be a sole representative.
Is that okay with everybody? I take up all your time, and we don't have 35 people, we just take them 3 minutes.
Okay.
I anticipate about 15 minutes.
It's awarded, board director, that's it.
I have a handout, five minutes?
Yes.
Next speaker. Review. As you can see from the first page, my presentation is going to be divided into 4 parts. I have a question for the board, I have a request of the board, I have an announcement ready, and I have a comment. My question, and, Mr. Haas, thank you for your email on Friday. I'm going to do my best not to mention the N-word, because it is pending litigation, and I don't expect you to comment on pending litigation. So I'm going to direct my comments, my questions, my requests, my announcement to things in general. My question deals with, and it's in the packet there. There has been some confusion, at least on my part, regarding this plain commercial complex that you gentlemen added to the resolutions last June, it's been about a year, okay? I've set forth several sections on here. I would note that the definition section of plain commercial complex indicates that only permitted uses are allowed on a plain commercial complex. That is backed up by Section 7, 12.2B, 7, which also indicates that the plain commercial complex can only have permitted uses. I've referenced 7, 12.2A, which are the permitted uses that are allowed in a B1. I've noted that 7, 12.2B lists drive-through, drive-in, drive-up as a conditionally permitted use. So my first question, the 2 parts to the trustees is, how do you reconcile this language in the resolution? It looks, from my reading of these resolutions, that the only uses that are permitted in the commercial, plain commercial complex are the 3 that are listed in 7, 12.2, which is anything that's listed in an S1 suburban office district, a convenience retail use, a personal service store, or a restaurant that does not include a drive-through, drive-in, or drive-up. Is that something the trustees can answer?
Well, I mean, I think, in terms of getting into a debate or a legal debate, certainly you can see that legally speaking, a conditionally permitted use could certainly be considered a permitted use.
And that's, all I'm getting, all I want is clarification.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that that's what, in this, it's hard because I know why you're here. You know, they know why you're here.
Correct.
So the specifics of it, when we think of a permitted use, would be inclusive of a conditionally permitted use.
And that's, that's all I want clarification for. Now, but you can see that from our perspective, it can be confusing.
I can absolutely see that.
Again...
Again, the word, the phrase permitted use is used in the definition. Use is permitted, use is as permitted is used in the definition of planned commercial complex, and then the resolutions list permitted uses, they distinguish between, you can see that.
I can understand your argument.
Okay. But it frames me to the second page of my, my second question, also a point of contention, but may or may not be a point of contention, but something that's going on in the township. One of the things that has happened over the past nine, 10 months is I've made certain arguments to certain bodies that direct access through a residential neighborhood, the prohibition against direct access through a residential neighborhood means something, means a certain thing. I know Mr. Falk hasn't agreed with my interpretation under the board, his only field didn't agree with my interpretation, I know, but Farmer didn't agree with my interpretation. So what I'm here tonight to ask you then is, what does that language mean? Because if it doesn't mean, if it doesn't mean what I think it means and what I think most people in the room think it means, then it has no meaning.
I'm not sure I follow you there. I mean, they've assigned it or ascribed to a certain meaning throughout the.
But, I'm sorry.
Throughout the court process that we're, that we're in. So I'm not sure I follow you, that it has no meaning.
Yeah, I disagree with your contention there, that part of my issue and part of why I'm here tonight is that nobody has been able to tell me, no one has been able to tell folks sitting behind me, why the situation that exists over there is not direct access to a residential neighborhood. So I disagree with your statement that it's been interpreted a certain way. My contention is it hasn't been interpreted at all. My second point, and again, maybe this is one better suit for Mr. Falk to clarify my point, and that is, what other situation can there be in the township in which this language would come into play? In other words, if you don't have a situation where a commercial district is abutting a residential district, and there's a business on that commercial district, and the means of ingress and egress are going into that residential district upon which it abuts, if this language doesn't apply to that circumstance, then what circumstance does it apply to? And that's what I mean. As you know, we all know, any kind of statutory interpretation, we can't interpret language to render meaningless. So my question is, I just want, I want someone in this process, that no one has, the board, Mr. Falk hasn't, the board of zoning appeals didn't, I mean, the only person who spoke in the BZA meeting was the person who spoke against it. Other than that, it was 3-2 vote silence from the other board. But Farmer didn't do it. So I just want someone to explain to me why I'm wrong, why we're wrong, why isn't this direct access to a residential neighborhood, but two entrances and exits flow right onto a residential street.
And then I understand you wanting that answer, that that's not going to come from the board, due to the fact that we're litigating, it hasn't been speak. That's, that's not an appropriate stance or position for them to take while this is being taken through the Fifth District Court Appeals.
And I would, and I understand that, that, you know, this is their resolution, so the board, you guys passed this at some point, you were in your process. Again, we just want an explanation, we just want an explanation. To that end, as you see on the third page, as, with the exact code section. My request then, part two, under, I'm not of chapter 519, under chapter 519, there's several ways in which an amendment to the zoning resolutions can be, it can be done by zoning commission, it can be done by trustee. So my request tonight is to ask the trustees, and I have a sample resolution here, I'm asking the trustees to pass a resolution tonight, asking the zoning commission to simply clarify the language in those two sections, so that this issue doesn't happen, okay, going down the road. Is that something that the trustees would be willing to do? Our meeting coming up on July 8th, I see now. Am I asking them to take a position on anything? I'm simply asking that this matter be looked at by the zoning commission in order to clarify the language. Eric, I mean, outside of the process of the two, the zoning, the zoning commission zoning appeals being independent bodies from this board, I mean, are parameters set forth by the Ohio revised code and then some additional parameters that come with them for our home rule, somebody's asking here, find work with the home rule component, is it R.C., is it O.
It's not necessarily home rule. I mean, certainly it is, it is, it's a request essentially, I want to be clear, from a legal perspective, I don't have a dog in the fight. So I feel like, I feel like we're going back and forth, we don't, we don't need to. If I want, whatever is supposed to happen is going to happen. So without having a dog in the fight, this proposed resolution is obviously, he's doing a good job for his clients to ask for it, I get it. But it is essentially asking to weigh in on something that's being considered by another body. Because I understand your points about the things that were brought up.
Something that's coming after, after the facts.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You already have something in.
And I'm not sure what effect it would have, but frankly, I'm not sure if it would affect the situation immediately in hand or not. But it's almost, and it's almost a little bit like an advisory opinion, that hey, we think this means that to a district, so this is what we're.
No, let me clarify, I'm not asking, what I'm asking is, is for the zoning commission to consider amendments to clear up this language, clear up the language in 712.2, because, and I don't want to assume that I know your intent, but when I read that language, it seems to me that you had a particular intent when it came to that planned commercial complex. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that your intent was to have two separate buildings on one parcel with one of the buildings having a drive-through. Now please, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that was your intent, because it's a parking traffic nightmare. Have two buildings on the one lot, which is, you understand how rare that is, you know, zoning in general, two buildings on one lot is very rare, which is why you guys, the part why you guys, I know instituted this last year was to bring a lot of, some of the buildings in the township into, into performing use that had been prior previously not performed. But I'm not so sure that your intent was to have two separate buildings on one lot, and one of those buildings also has a drive-through. And that's how I read 712.2. And that's all I'm asking. Eric, if I'm making a wrong, the force number, this is forward, these go before the board of zoning commission for text amendment changes, and then when they adopt those changes, they come before us.
Yes.
For the sake of information purposes, only, and not for the sake of a final sign-off? Or is it, do you think it would be submitted?
It always comes to you guys for an approval.
What we would do is initiate, or Danny would initiate the zoning text, saying submitted to Stark County Regional Plan for their approval, they would hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
They make the recommendation, send it back to our zoning commission, our zoning commission then sends it to us for a hearing.
Right, I understand. What I'm, there's a specific code section that allows three of you to pass a resolution suggesting that they consider an amendment. It's not a resolution making them consider the amendment, it's simply a resolution that proposes that they consider. That's all I'm asking. So the July 8th meeting, that they, you can pass a resolution plan to put that on, gentlemen, for the July meeting, but let's just specify to the meeting, specify to the meeting.
The next meeting for the zoning commission will not be until the second, the second Wednesday o'clock. Right now, the dining meeting for the zoning commission is scheduled for July.
What's the July 8th meeting?
The July 8th meeting is a, is a board meeting.
I'll consider it.
A public hearing will be set.
Right.
More, there will be a board zoning appeals meeting in July, right, there will be one meeting, there will be a board zoning appeals meeting.
Second.
No, I did it back, I did it back. No, there will not be a board zoning appeals meeting in July.
Okay, I understand.
There will be a.
If your meeting says to.
Right.
Pass.
The July 8th meeting is just a public, just setting a public hearing for the zoning commission meeting. Anyone can request a text amendment, it can be requested by the public, it can be requested by the zoning commission, it can be requested by, by board trustees.
Eric, point number three, my announcement. I understand it. Mr. Lang may have already knocked the cat out of the back. But I have here an initiative petition that we are going to begin circulating around the registered voters of Plank Township. And our hope is to put this, our own changes, changes to 712.2 that I've written, hope to get that on the ballot by November 6th, and have voters of Plank Township decide whether or not they want to change the zoning resolutions. It is my, our position that it will affect the situation retroactively, and I would direct your attention to Sellers versus Ubin Township.
You don't district do this, man?
Yes, ours, Judge Lainey.
Okay.
2010, 1138.
Thank you.
Which I think she makes it pretty clear in there that if we are successful in changing the resolution prior to construction, then they do not have a non-performing use, unless they will not be able to continue construction.
Okay.
So that is our goal at this point. And also, again, the third one I wanted you, I wanted you guys to hear that from us, so to hear it from the board. So we'll be coming to your doors, asking you to sign this petition.
I'm sorry, Attorney Jurgensen, did you say that Judge Lainey wrote that?
Yes. Fourth part, last part, my comment. You guys have been very nice, very friendly. I wasn't quite sure what to expect tonight, if I was walking to a hostile environment or not. So I will choose my words carefully, I don't want to be antagonistic at this late time. One of the most, one of the recent, now I will, I'm talking about the case. One of the recent filings in the court appeals was a motion by Easton Village to, well, first they were filing the brief, they also filed a motion to dismiss the appeal, part of the appeal that appeals this thing. Mr. Falk, you, you signed an affidavit that was attached to that. As a lawyer, as a citizen of Plank Township, you mentioned not having a dog in the fight based upon that affidavit. Mr. Falk certainly has a dog in the fight. But there are comments in that affidavit that concern me, one of which is, Mr. Falk is under the impression that the conditional use permits that were granted back in September of last year are actually in effect, and that is not the case. And so I simply want to put the trustees on notice that, because we've heard different things, we've heard rumors, you get rumors, and these folks, some of these folks live right by the construction, they talk to the workers, things like that. Again, our position is that they cannot do anything right now that would be in violation of the zoning resolution, which means they cannot build a second building on that property. That would be your planned commercial complex, you need a conditional use permit for that, they don't have one as we speak right now. So if we find out, or if we see that construction has begun, we've heard rumors that they're a core foundation of the company's. I just want everyone to stay on the same page, that we're willing to file another lawsuit, receive an injunction, we're going to receive attorney fees, et cetera, et cetera, because our position is that that's your zoning inspector's job to make sure that nothing gets done out there that isn't supposed to be done. So, any questions? All right, I appreciate your time, I appreciate the sympathetic here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jurgensen. Are there any other residents in the crowd that have any other additional items of business to address with this board of trustees? If so, state your name and your address for the fiscal officer.
This thing's rather minor. Suzanne Garber, 5915, Flinders Circle, Northeast. The stoplights on Easton and Middle Branch, I think their timing has changed, and it seems that we have a real, real long wait, no matter which way you're going, and I'm complaining.
I noticed that.
Mrs. Garber, I called the county this morning and they were looking into it.
Thank you.
I was, I forgot that I was calling on that also, I had a resident, I noticed he was very anxious.
I know there's quite a few people that filtered in the room here this evening. This far is part of our public meetings, it does require we know who's in attendance, so if you didn't sign in prior to taking a seat, if you'll sign the sheet on your way out, are there any other items to come before the board, public speaks, that will close out the public speaks? It's going to take to concerns of trustees, concerns of the fiscal officer. It's going to take us to the approval of amendments, and I'm going to move on June 10th, 2014's regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Yeah, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, and then I'll move on to June 18th, 2014 emergency meeting.
I'll second that.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, so be it hereby resolved by the Plank Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session at 6:40, 6:40, 6 p.m. of this regular meeting. It's authorized under the Ohio revised Code 121.22G, with the per se consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employer official, 1B, appointment of a public employer official, 3, conference of the law director of the 10th township, and pending direction for action. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.